Well, good for you. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so we have six thirty-one. Is everybody just about ready?
I am sure we are.
So, okay, so we have our quorum, so. Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And welcome to the Lowell Planning Board Meeting for November second, twenty twenty. Tonight, we do have three matters on the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Do we have Attorney Cox with us so far yet this evening?
Yes, you do, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Mr. Cox, I know I had an opportunity to speak with you briefly earlier today. You indicated that you might be requesting a continuance on your matter. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. We are requesting the matter to continue to a meeting in December.
So at this point in time, going back to the agenda, the minute, first matter we have is the Minister of Approval for October nineteenth. Any of the board members have any questions or comments?
I have none, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion to approve the October nineteenth minutes.
We have the motions made for approval. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion made in the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes yes, so those minutes are approved. So I'd like to, if I could, on the agenda, take the Tamarack Street first due to the fact that Attorney Cox has requested a continuance. I'm going to read the advertisement. Definitive subdivision approval for Tamarack Street. John Cox has applied to the Planning Board on behalf of Martin Burke for the approval of the definitive subdivision plan. That includes his extension of the above street by approximately one hundred and forty feet in construction of a single-family dwelling for Tamarack Street. The site is entirely within the Hundred Year Floodplain Zone and is located within the traditional neighborhood, single-family zoning district. The project requires planning board approval under Lowell subdivision of land magnifications. May we hear from Attorney Cox, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Attorney John Cox, three seventy-five Gorm Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. I represent Martin Burke in this matter. Very briefly, and the reason for the request for continuance, we were before the, as noted from Francesca's memo, on September the ninth, we were before the Conservation Commission Lowell, where the matter was granted, unanimous approval at the Conservation Commission. Then, on September twenty-eighth, out of the blue, we received the notice that DEP had appealed it. And the years I've been doing this, and I know the years that Jeff Graham, the engineer on the project, has been doing this, we can't recall ever having this happen, that DEP would take an appeal on their own initiative. So what we did, so we've been trying to reach people at DEP. It's difficult, as you can imagine, with the pandemic and people working remotely. But we finally did, Jeff Graham, the engineer, finally did get ahold of the person assigned to this matter from DEP. Spoke to him about ten days ago. Got ahold of him again today through emails. And they have set up a site visit, which is apparently what's required in this process. So a site visit is scheduled for this Friday at one o'clock, I guess, on the site. And we're hopeful that the site visit will clear up the matter and we can get back to you people and try to move forward in this project. Everybody's kind of at a loss, but that's where we're at. So I guess we're going to need to request that the matter be continued to your December meeting. Hopefully give us enough time to work out any issues that may need to be worked out with DEP. And hopefully be back in front of you before Christmas for your consideration of this project. But unfortunately, that's where we're at. I don't have a lot of other information to report on it as to why they would take their own initiative and appeal the matter.
Oh, free. And I think our next meeting in December is the one December seventh. Is that correct?
Sorry, I don't have the schedule on hand.
You must have it right. Yeah, because I think it's the first Monday in December, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so the applicant has requested that we continue the matter to December seventh. So to get more information, obviously, I think for the board, at least, I'd like to know, obviously, what the Mass DEP is doing. Because if they deny it, then I don't think it would be really coming before us because there's not much we could do, even if we approve it and they deny it and say you can't do it because of the conditions wasn't satisfactory. Then I don't think they'll even be in front of us. And obviously, I think the board, I know speaking myself, would like to know what the state would like to do on this project before we vote on it. Because then it would give us a lot more clarity into what the situation is regards to the floodplain mitigation. So what's the request of the board?
Mr. Chairman, before you ask for vote, just for the record, I just want to be put on record that I will be recusing myself on this issue. So I would not even be voting on.
The continuance, okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue the hearing until December seventh.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Bob Malovich. Thank you. All in favor, aye, say aye.
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 Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. The motion's allowed. And the matter will be continued to December seventh. So anybody watching this evening, any questions on this project? It'll be reviewed again before the Planning Board on December seventh. Hopefully, Mr. Cox, you'll have the information you're looking for on that date and give us an update. We wish you well. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so moving along, we have a site plan review amendment. This is two Prince Ave, one Markley Way. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons on the application by Markley Group seeking to amend a two thousand eighteen site plan review approval to expand the data center at two Prince Ave, one Markley Way. The data center is in the Light Industrial Zoning District. And the applicant is seeking approval for various site plan changes, including but not limited to reorientation of generators, addition of two water storage tanks with pump house, relocation of cooling equipment, demolition of an existing boiler building, removing auxiliary fuel storage tanks with underground piping, relocation of parking spaces, site circulation improvements and associated modifications. The changes will require a site plan review, approval under section eleven point four point two, and any other relief as requested by the Lowell zoning ordinance. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Lou Kipfer. I work for the Markley Group. I'd like to thank the members of the board for their time this evening. Obviously, we've been in front of you a few times before on this issue. So I'd just like to give a quick update on some of the open items and concerns that were presented in front of us before we turn it over to Teo Kinderman at Sand Tech that can run through the drawings to show the, you know, the modifications that are part of this site plan approval. As the board is aware, some of our neighbors have raised concerns regarding four of the previously approved generators on the south side of our property. We have finished updating some modeling. We have confirmed that our current stack heights are in compliance with Mass DEP guidelines. But we've also found that if we do raise those stack heights, they're about seventeen, eighteen feet now. If we do raise those up to twenty-five feet, there is an improvement in the particulate dispersion from these generators. So we are working with our generator manufacturer Caterpillar. But we do plan on moving forward with raising the exhaust stacks on the four south side generators. Also, on the south side, we have moved forward with a lot of the planting on the south side between the generators and the butters houses. We raised the grade up there and we've gone through and planted some of the screening. We've got about twenty-five plants total installed to date since our last meeting and are moving forward with finishing the landscaping on that side of the property. We've also had our fuel storage permit that was unanimously approved by the city council. On the Bourne Street side, we are planning on moving forward. We've got a contractor engaged to do a full fence replacement along that line. Teo can show you some pictures of where we've done this fence replacement and cleanup on other areas of the site. But that was an issue that some of the neighbors were concerned about. So we are moving forward with the fence replacement on the Bourne Street. We've got a good email that was sent to the Planning Board from the Lowell Water Department about the water storage tanks, just confirming that there'll be no negative impacts to any of the butters. This doesn't pose any sort of problem to the Lowell water infrastructure. We've also been working on, I know there was a concern about the cooling tower noise last meeting. So as part of our fence replacement on Bourne Street, we're also looking at, you know, putting sound fencing along there to help alleviate some of the neighbors' concerns. And we are working with our consultant, VHB, to make sure that the site as a whole, you know, complies with all applicable guidelines for sound levels at the property line. And just beside that, we did, you know, the building commissioner was nice enough to update a letter that he previously sent that the board is in possession of that gives a good general update of where we're at with construction, some of the things that we've done since the last meeting as well. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Teo and he can get into the specifics of the plan and the changes. And we're available if any of the butters or the board has any comments or questions about this.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks. Thanks, Luke. Thank you, members of the planning board. For the record, my name is Teo Kinderman. I'm a senior principal with Sand Tech Planning and Landscape Architecture with our office in Boston. I, this is, this, I'm showing you and hope you can see my screen. I'm dissident drawing that was also sent out to you last week. This is the overlay that shows in black line the approved plans and then in red lines, the modifications we are proposing. And as you can see, it's the north and east side that have sort of the modifications. And I will be zooming in on those modifications. This is the equipment yard on the north side of the building, the overlay. It's a little bit chaotic here, but this slide, just sort of, you can see them side by side here. You can see that the, what was approved on the north side of the building was twenty generators with switching equipment and some cooling equipment. And as you can see here, five above-ground fuel storage tanks that were planned on supplying the generators with diesel fuel. And the bottom, what now is being proposed, or who would like to modify the site plan for, is eighteen generators with one house generator, smaller house generator. But eighteen generators with an integral fuel storage cell that sits on the bottom. So we have eliminated the above-ground fuel storage here. What that gave us the opportunity as well was to connect this road here to, through the generator yard and therefore completing our loop all the way around the building instead of having an exit here, as an only exit, which we are keeping. We now can also drive around the building in its entirety. We also added in this bottom corner, left corner here, a loading dock for two trucks. But so the generator yard got greatly simplified. Then the east side of the building, you can, again, you can see the overlay here as in zooming of that earlier plan that they had. And again, this is a side-by-side comparison of where we were and what we would like to do now. Of course, we've talked at length already about the water tanks, as you can, as they are shown here. This little structure here is a one-story pump house and a treatment building for the water that's stored, that's then supplied to these cooling towers here. So that's what we would like to build. We had the parking spaces before here. And this building that housed, that housed some equipment for maintaining the big building. So this building has been, is proposed to be demolished, and it is demolished already to date. And then we also, what this plan doesn't show, the plan on the right shows a retaining wall because we wanted to keep this whole area of the site lower. So we are, we have installed here this retaining wall. You've seen this image before. You can see the wall, how we wanted to lower the site so that, to minimize the visual impact. Luke mentioned that the fence here on Bourne Street, we are now proposing to install the security fence, as is elsewhere on the property. Hopefully, that work will be done this year. But if weather doesn't permit, you know, that might be a spring project. But that's the ten-foot security fence. And that will have, we will augment that with some sound attenuation just so that the sounds will be diminished for our neighbors. This is a picture from New Hall Street, actually, where we have installed the fence. And you see some of the evergreens behind it. You see the big oaks that we left in place that were there when we started. But this is the fence, the ten-foot high-security fence that we are proposing and that we have installed around the property. And as you can see, this part of the, this part of the property is nicely cleaned up. This is how it used to look. This is a photograph taken from inside of our property, but you can see the big oaks. You can barely see the big oaks through all the overgrowth here, but that's all cleaned up. You know, we've installed the fence and it's now looking nicely maintained. And this is, this was in New Hall Street. When we started this project, and it was mentioned last hearing as well, that the Conservation Commission made us plant all along their jurisdictional boundary. So we installed all of this plant material in this area per per your conditions from the Conservation Commission. And the planning board took up that same order as, that same condition as well and added to your board order. But so this, we cleaned up first. And then, you know, we've been sort of going along the bill, along our perimeter, New Hall Street you just saw here. We cleaned up Livingston Carter. We obviously did a whole front door. Our entrance was all cleaned up. We installed new fencing along Prince Avenue. And we've been sort of working our way around. And so, again, per your request, we started installing some landscaping as much as we could. So we, this is the boom that Luke just mentioned with the landscape that we just installed. And then we'll show you some pictures of the installed wall here. And then one of the last pictures, actually, we will show you an image, photograph of the property in this top corner here. But, you know, so we've been cleaning up our property as we go along on the property line. And we're now just coming around here and working on this. So this is a photograph of the boom that Luke mentioned. These are the generators on the south side. As you can see, we burnt this up. The planting on the rendering shows the plants on the backside of this boom is sort of away from the neighbors and on the lower slopes of the boom. So when I was out on site a couple of weeks ago, I did tell the landscape contractor to move all this planting up to the front here and then somewhat higher up the boom. So there is, so these plants have, now that they're sitting a bit higher, an easy three, four feet of additional height. These are green giant abovites. They will grow up to three feet in height a year. So they, we hope that pretty soon they'll provide screening. And these are the stacks that, the high stacks that Luke just mentioned that they were planning to adding seven, eight feet of stack height, too. So this is the wall in the corner of Bourne Street and Eileen Castle, our neighbor. So you can see this, this is what they're working on. Wall is complete, starting to boom up on top of the wall. Here you can see the boom that's already created. And so just to provide additional screening for our site here. If all goes well, we could be planting on this boom as early as next week. That at least is in how we envision the process going. Just to close up, looking at Bourne Street, Bourne Street is high up here, just close above the wall. It's finished grade here. So this fence here along Bourne Street will be replaced by the security fence with the sound attenuation. So that'll be done in the next few months. And then we'll be installing the landscape. We might do a little bit of landscape here this year, but we really would like to get the fence in first in order to not destroy the landscape. And as you, as we mentioned last time in our presentation, one of our neighbors had requested that we come and visit her backyard. And Luke did that the following day and took this photograph. So these are the newly installed generators. And granted, there used to be a building here that was condemned that we took down. But, you know, you can clearly see the generators from her backyard. And we, we got what she was saying and what she was telling us. So unfortunately, I don't have any photographs. But today, we installed abovites per her request here in her yard, just to provide her screening of this. So that happened today. And unfortunately, I don't have photographs to show you that. And so this was really our presentation. It was, I think, in the last couple of meetings that we had with the board, we addressed all of the issues, the outstanding issues that were out there. We just wanted to recap here in this, in this meeting, all the changes that we are and the modifications that we are proposing. We think this makes it a much better site and much more, obviously, much more useful for us. But it's also better for the neighbors with better screening and better for security with the roadway all the way around the building and not having above-ground fuel storage tanks. So we think this is a huge improvement. And we are ready here to answer any and all of your questions. So this is our presentation for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is anybody else going to be speaking from Prince, from Markley Group? Was it just Luke and Teo that completed the presentation for the applicant?
Correct, correct.
Correct.
Okay, so at this point in time, I will open up the meeting to the public. And I'll start first with anybody who'd like to speak in favor. Anybody like to speak in favor of the project? Anybody want to speak in favor? Hearing none. Anybody like to speak in opposition of anybody who has any questions? Anybody who'd like to speak in opposition?
Hi, this is Randall Sneed at sixty-three Otis Street. Hello?
Hello.
Okay, so I appreciate a lot of the work that they have done so far. However, the fencing that they showed that they have put around some of the property doesn't look like that's the sound deadening fence that they're speaking of. So that is not what is proposed, I do not believe, from the conversation that they were saying tonight. As for the water tanks that are currently present and are not present but are on the agenda tonight that they're wanting to approve, I still believe that even after their plantings and even five years down the line when they're saying that there should be growth, that those tanks are going to still be visible to us from our residences and from the street. The fence that they're proposing to put in possibly may help eliminate some of that view, but I still believe much of that will be demonstrated with the purpose of the tanks that was approved by the city council for the fuel storage. There was a question as for trying to put stipulations on it. And the city council said they could not place any kind of stipulations. It would be the responsibility of the planning board to place any stipulations if there was. One that I would like to see placed, where especially where they're saying they're already going to try to improve the existing ones, is to be able to do air quality testing at the level of the residents, not inside the property line. Because obviously, inside the property line is well below the height of the stacks that you need to do it at the level of the residents that are going to be experiencing these emissions coming from the smoke stacks. I would like to be able to see some kind of stipulation that they do some kind of testing with that being done to show that their quality testing is satisfactory at that level. The project that's been going on seems a little bit, never stopped, really, that they are still doing foundation work in the area of where they have a proposed for the new HVAC center and the location of the proposed cooling towers. These, I say, they have foundation work that they're currently placing at those locations. They have never stopped doing construction on this. They're going with the assumption that this is already passed, is what I'm seeing. The berms that they put, or the berms that they placed, the wall that they placed, it looks like a very nice wall. I agree with that. But it's just the fact that if this was at my residence and I was told that I had to stop, I would have had to stop. I wouldn't be able to continue doing work as if I was able to, it was going to be passed at some point in time. But the most important thing is I would like to be able to see stipulations placed that they need to do that air quality testing at the level of the residents if this is passed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, it's Eileen Castle.
Okay, hello.
Hello, it's Eileen Castle speaking. I would like to add, I live at sixty-four Otis Street. I have several things I would like to talk about or ask questions about. In the July meeting, the fence and the trees were removed and all within six inches of my property fence. It's not my fence, but it's Markley's fence. This has been my family property for a hundred years. This is not what, this is not an issue. This was not an issue until Markley changed their minds and decided to put water tanks where there was supposed to be beautification of the neighborhood. I planted trees and driveways and three fences above the fence. Now it sounds like they're trying to put trees on my side of the fence. And I don't think that they should be doing that. They put the fence, the fence has been there. I have been here for a hundred years. And I think there's probably laws, I believe, that would agree with me. So I just want to make sure that somebody understands that I plan on doing things about this. And I think that the planning board should look at this because this is not the right. I plan on doing things about this, and I think that the planning board should look at this, because this is not the right thing to be have done. Um I sent you some pictures, so if you look at the pictures, you'll see one photo. And one of the photos will show you the fence, I am standing right at the fence and I am facing looking down. And all you can see is rocks, so they have no place to put any trees. Or anything else that that might cover or might protect the coverage so that I won't be able to see the water towers or anything else. Um down below is always water, it's never ending because it's all coming from up above. And I wanted to somebody to make note of it, so you can see all of it, sometimes it looks like a pool. So you can see what's going on is that we're probably gonna have erosion eventually, I know that that's why the rocks are there, but that doesn't make it continually be alright. I think we're losing soil again, but I can't do anything about it unless conservation can. Um have they ever looked into any other areas for these? They were supposed to. And the planning board requested it, but they've never shown anything other than these site plans. One of the photos shows this past Saturday at six thirty in the morning. I woke up, I thought it was a weekday, because as usual, they were going at it at six thirty. We've called about this, I've talked to the to the planning board, no one seems to do anything about it and no one cares. Um the cooling towers, did someone give them permission to build them? What is the size of them? I heard they're thirty to forty feet high. Will the spit city be inspecting them? Do they admit droplets? Are they are the drops a stagnant water going to cause house problems? What about the noise levels? I just heard them say they're gonna put some sort of a fence, does that mean they're putting another fence in my yard? Um I haven't heard anything about it, nor has anybody talked to me about any of these things. Um how can they pour concrete and do all these things without the city planning board approving the site plan? If a homeowner tried to do this, we would be stopped and told to have it all taken down. Cooling tower waste, I saw in the plans that there was a marked cooling tower waste, what does that mean? Cooling towers were supposed to be on top of the building, that was the original plan. Site circulation improvements and associations with modifications, that was in the agenda today, what does that mean? My guess, as soon as the planning board approves all these plans, Markley Corporation can add or change anything they want, which is no different than they're doing now. I would like to know what all of this means. Um they still haven't fixed Jake's odor problem, four years, this is how long it's been. Now they're going to have the same problem in the lower Bourne Street with neighbors, and they just said they put up trees, I'm not sure that this is the answer. My fence is ten feet, not eight feet, they thought it was eight feet, but it's ten. So now, if they put up eight feet trees, it'll take two or three years at least for them to reach the height of the fence, never mind anything else. Everything I understand about the planning board and the the planning board and the city was that they are supposed to have the best interest of the neighborhoods. So far, I don't seem to work, it doesn't seem to work that way, Markley seems just to think that they can do whatever they want. I know that you have pictures of the trees, I also left you a picture of the street. And what that was showing is that the house across the way. The street is is made so that it it goes from east to west, it slopes. So all the water from the west, the east side slopes down to the west, the bottom of my yard. Uh my driveway is constantly with two or three inches of water, in the winter time it freezes over. So the burn is just gonna mean that they're gonna have, I'm gonna have more water there because it's not gonna go anywhere. Thank you, I appreciate all your attention and I do appreciate any help that you have given us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Yeah, my name is Fred Laughlin, I live at one oh one Bourne Street. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My concern is, I mentioned before about the dirt pile and uh it's still there. But I I wanna know, has it been checked out? You know, I know from past experience, I mentioned this before, that usually when dirt doesn't leave a construction site, it's because they fear contamination. Now I had trucks driving by my house the other day, uh moving a bunch of that down towards uh the corner where they were doing the berm. And they weren't covered, you know, I mean uh. I don't know, I I'm just concerned about that, because there's one day that they sprayed stuff on it, yeah, green. Stop the whole down the dust and everything, and then that washed off. Now I still, you know, I still can't open my doors, I still can't open my windows without having dust and crap come in here all the time. And I'm not in a butter, but I'm directly across the street on the other side of uh Bourne Street. So the cooling towers, I I could throw a rock to them. And my concern about them is uh what type are they? How many tons are they? There's seven of them, as far as I know. Uh are they induced draft, counterflow, uh you know, then they have crossflow and. Which have to be a larger size, and if they're like an induced draft, I I don't believe. Oh, I don't know, I'm concerned about the cleaning of it, and Legionelle, uh what are they doing to control Legionnaires' disease? I mean, what are the chemicals involved and what's their down, you know, down size or whatever, what's the problem with them? Uh I've worked on these things for fifty years and and you know, the vapor isn't really the best stuff you wanna breathe. Uh I haven't worked on them for two years and I used to break out every spring when we'd work on them and clean them. Uh in the same place on my chin every for twenty years, you know, a- and uh. I haven't for the last two years, because I haven't worked on it. And I'm hoping I don't start doing that again when you fire these things up. The noise level, I wanna know about the noise level, what would they do about that? Because I've worked on towers, we've moved them because they're too close to buildings and the echo effect was just, you know, too much. I don't know, I won't go on, my thing is the dirt pile, I wanna know what's the what's it consists of?
The gas.
Has it been checked? And I don't know, i- it's still blowing into my house and still into my yard, I look out my front door and I see it every day. Uh it was like I said, it was covered once and that was it, you know? Uh like I say, I'm not in a butter, but I'm directly across the street, so it's like.
Towers.
You know? I don't know.
Chemicals?
Yeah, and what chemicals do they use in in the tower and uh. I don't know, I'd like to have more information on these towers, you know? And what type they are and who made them and how much tonnage they are, you know? That's all, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak?
Hi, um my name is Nancy Forts, I live at thirty-six Iowa Street. Um I first, I want to say thank you for putting those trees in behind my house to shield the view with the generators, it's a start. And a few minutes ago, uh Luke Keifer uh said that uh you were working with Caterpillar to raise the stacks on the generators behind my house. I was wondering what the timeline is and what recourse I have if it is not done. Because things were promised in the past by Markley and took years to accomplish. I E, for instance, those trees, they just put them in a couple of weeks ago. So I would like some definite answers and also I would like it made part of the board's granting permission to Markley for the amended plans. Because um frankly, I don't trust Markley after, especially the the what they have promised and what they actually do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Hi there, this is Jake Forts, also at thirty-six Iowa Street. Um sorry, we're just doing some switching around here. Um but um you know, basically, what I wanted to show you guys is that um, you know, what you guys don't usually deal with all the time. And what you've been dealing with the last couple of years, um it's actually been four years now that these generators, the two first two generators behind my house have been installed. Hearing tonight from Luke, actually, I heard this news uh earlier today from Luke, it was actually quite refreshing to hear from him. However, who we usually hear from and is somebody who hasn't actually said anything tonight, but I think that's largely because of the. It seems to not be as well received with this board um as it is with the city council is from Mr. Alites. Um and so basically, what I wanna do tonight is to, Tao's kinda like chuckling there, because he knows. Um it has been, um you know, it's been a situation going forward this. And um you guys know, uh especially Mr. Forshed and Mr. Lenihan, you guys know uh full well. Um you know, what we have been through, the character assassination, the neighborhood assassination, for the entire time that the Markley Group has been here. Um it has been nonstop and ongoing. I want to address for starters, uh some of the concerns that have been here um that were brought up earlier this year that were never really addressed. Um so I'm gonna be sharing my screen um with you guys to show you part of the process, I do apologize if this runs a little bit long, but there it is getting to something. Um so with that said, I want to show you guys something here. So um it was said repeatedly that, um oh, the trains used to go into Prince Macaroni and oh, they used to have so much more pollution. Um I have actually done some research and gotten some photos about the trains. Do you happen to see in this photo um something interesting that I wanna point out to you? Do you see the right hand side here? Do you see the amount of distance between my property, which is off on the right hand side? And the left hand side where the trains coming and go along? Now, Markley Group, when they came to town, um actually took back some of this property and pushed it further back over. Uh they reclaimed a lot of this property over here and pinched the parking spaces where you see on left over here. Um but I wanted to show you guys that um the train was never as close to the house as the generators are. Um so Mr. Alites, I would like to point out to you that um the information that you were indicating about the emissions from the trains was not entirely accurate, but. You know, the homework not being done, I wouldn't expect anything less. Um but as you see here from the different photos, you can see that there's more than a a hundred feet difference between where the train is and the property line where the fence is on the far right hand side of this photo. So I wanted to show you guys this, um because I wanted you guys to see. Now also in this photo here, my house is directly across from where this gap is. This gap no longer exists because their building two was put up. So we don't actually have the sightlines that we used to have anymore. So I'm not lying when I tell you guys, we have given enough to the Markley Group to have them come to town, and we did that knowingly at the beginning of it. So where are we at now? So we've had some progress, I think, um trying to get rid of like the noise that has been going on in the past with um, you know. Having Mr. Alites basically just, you know, calling us a bunch of, you know, whatevers at the city council meeting. Um you know, when I actually talked to Luke, I think we had a great conversation, Luke and Dawn and I, uh back a couple of months ago. And this was about holding promises. So back in twenty eighteen, you guys had told them and you agreed with the Conservation Commission and you said. You need to put in something to mitigate and what the Conservation Commission said, you need to do your planting on the south side of the property. That was supposed to occur in twenty nineteen, that didn't happen. I I tend to think that hopefully the conversation I had with him about keeping promises might have resonated and that's why they put this in. But it also occurs to me that Mr. Forshed, you had also said to them. Why isn't this done? Which was a very valid point, because it was supposed to have been done already. Now, as you see here, this is some of the planting on the berm that goes towards the westernmost side of the berm that, you know, the two generators that are active are over on the left hand side here. Now, these are the ones directly behind my house, as you can see, the planting is a little bit more um, you know, condensed behind my house, actually, I believe the full planting is there, it's not quite what the. What the site plan has that you guys have before you, there's a couple that are missing, so if you wanna count plants, Mr. Forshed. Um you know, you can do that if you'd like, um but as you can see here, that's only part of it. Um I do realize that there's construction stuff that goes along this way that is associated, I believe, with the construction that's ongoing down the back on the eastern side of the property. So my concern is, for starters, is can we put stipulations in here that the rest of the planting must be completed? On the south side of the property as was originally promised and was supposed to be completed uh by the end of the spring of twenty nineteen? So can we have that completed, please? I'm I'm very pleased with where we're at now, don't get me wrong, and I'm very, very excited to hear about the um, you know, about the increases in the smoke stacks that are are proposed. Um and hopefully this will mitigate it, you know, just doing some quick math today, hopefully. Um but you know, as you can see through here, this is along the backside of my property, as you can see, not all of the planting is done. It's all about camera angles, so what Tao showed you. Um you know, basically, it looked like everything was in place, everything is not in place, where are the, uh Selena's? Um that's neither here nor there. Um so that's, you know, what I wanted to show you guys through here. Um now, this is from a different angle, this is looking towards my house, I'm the blue house as you see here. Um and as you see, the um the, you know, the generator here, as you can see, the generators are closer than the railroad. The railroad was not that close, as I showed you in the earlier photos. So you know, I'm I'm just, I'm tired of dealing with the lies that are being shown to everybody. Um you know, in July, um Mr. Alites actually said he found his hookers and whores um and drugs in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood isn't the greatest neighborhood, it's not Belvedere, Mr. Alites, it is not. However, this is a working class neighborhood, and to have you constantly disparage it is disgusting, frankly. Now, there was something that caught my attention uh with regards to the Markley Group's request um tonight, that um Tao, I expected better than um than this from you. Um and so this had to do with the update letter, somebody's trying to pull a fast one here and I don't like it. I'm not a fan of it, so let me make sure that I am sharing this, can you guys see the plan letter here? No?
I I cannot, Jake.
All right, so. Let's see here, do do, all right. So um in here, um this was submitted to the planning board, so um you know, what I see here is basically the fuel storage. Um you know, we were talking about the generators, the updates below. Tao, I have to say, I'm really, really surprised by this sentence here, I honestly am, my friend, I I would have expected better than this from you, I really would have. So you said the generators were also approved in September of twenty eighteen, so why are we back here tonight? That's the question I have for you guys, why are we back here tonight? We are back here tonight because the Markley Group didn't put up the correct information in the narrative that was sent out to the neighbors. Now, Mr. Forshed, I know you're really good at looking back at the um old stuff. Um so in twenty eighteen, if you could look at the narrative there, please, and tell me where exactly in that uh twenty eighteen site plan narrative did it mention? That four generators were supposed to go on the south side of the property, you won't find it, because it's not there. Deeply, deeply disturbed by this, um you know, I know somebody, I I don't know Tao if this was honestly you trying to pull a fast one here, I don't know what it was, but. I'm deeply disappointed in this, when I read this on Friday, my blood pressure skyrocketed.
Sorry, but I'll 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 explain later, but go on.
I'm like, that to me shows that there is some some gray area here, like I I wanna have faith. That you guys are going to do this smokestack height improvement and hopefully this will be the end of the problem. But I'm not liking this, because this was never actually approved by the planning board. And it was never actually said out loud in a narrative anywhere, as it should have been in a site plan. I know that they approved this site plan and it was included in there, but it wasn't actually set out right. Which is basically the same problem that you guys have now, which is why you're back here tonight, because you had to change some of the stuff around. So that's basically one of the things that I'm just like, where where are we coming from with this? You know, I try to trust, I I do try to trust, um you know, Luke, he seems like a pretty straight up guy, he hasn't given me the runaround on anything, he lets me know where his limitations are. He doesn't disparage the neighborhood and he tries to get a full picture, that I like. Mr. Alites, on the other hand, it's his way or the highway, and that doesn't work, because this this is a community of which Markley has been invited into. So we need to make this work, so where am I going with all of this? So um hopefully you can see this, because I did share. So, um, hopefully you can see this because I did share the screen. So we're back to the images again. Um, so basically this is the burn that they had built up over on Born Street. Um, and by Eileen Castle's house, which she was referring to that it might cause like some flooding in our neighborhood. Um, you know, on her side.
Jake, Jake, Jake was still seeing the letter.
Oh, you still seeing the letter? Alright, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, so we'll just go back over here to the share here. Okay. So here's the burn that you guys see here. Um, you know, there has been some improvements over there. I just, I'm not sure where all the planting is going to go that, um, you know, you have along that side. I know she's got some current concerns with it, um, because it is right up close to her property line. Um, but you know, in the sense of. Ongoing construction and kind of like doing things. So this is Hales Brook. This appeared originally in one of the first proposals. To do a modification to the wall. That wall is actually done and completed. They already filled it in, um, to, you know, put the putty into it to keep it together. So that's not even part of the narrative anymore because it's already been done. Um, but there was no approval for that, I don't believe. You know, and so here we go with what they're talking about here. So as you see here, the cooling towers, the foundations for them. Are poured already. The work for that has never stopped. Um, even though, you know, you guys haven't made your official decision for that yet. So we've got two of them that are already installed here. Um, and then we have, um, the compost building, which is, I believe what this is, is going up. Um, as well, um, and they've been pouring concrete for that as well. So. Basically the crux of what has been said by some of the neighbors already is that the construction's ongoing. They're not waiting for you guys to make a decision. And they're not respecting that you guys need to make a decision. They're just doing it. Um, you know, so, and here's the back of the property. Um, with the old loading dock, the new one has already been put in further over to the right, but because of the way the piles are. Um, you know, you can't really see them. Um, you know, so I just wanted to share this with you guys and remind you that, um, you know, through all of this process. I have been one hundred percent transparent with you. Um, you know, and through this timeframe, I've tried to work with them. Um, and I only think it's been recently that this has gotten somewhere. Um, you know, that my work with them has, um, you know, finally started to resonate. Um, that, you know, I'm not out for what I want is fair and just. And I have a like to stand on to want it. Because we invited them to come here. Now, for those of you who are new on the, um. On the planning board, you aren't aware of what happened back in twenty fifteen. Um, but those of us who were around back then. Um, we do know what happened in twenty fifteen and I want to show you guys this because those of you who are new on the planning board, you, you need to understand why. There is a trust issue. With the Markley Group. So this here, as you can see. Is an email that, uh, has never been disputed by Mr. Alites, I might add. Um, that was sent back to the Kevin Murphy, who was the city manager at the time. So this had to do with the driveway to Prince Ave. And so what I want to point out to you guys is when they originally came to town, they did it already misleading the residents of the area. This subject came up before the site plan review before you, but I insisted that he, Mr. Markley. Do nothing that might rile up the neighborhood until site plan review had been secured, so he could start building. So they had come to town and they had promised that they weren't going to do stuff. And ever since then, it has been a rat race game to keep up with them. Now, I know Mr. Alites hasn't spoken tonight, but I think that's because, you know, whatever goes on here, but, um, you know. The fact of the matter is. That this has been going on for five years. Where it has been something that has been promised and promises not kept. So where does this bring me? This brings me to asking you guys to basically put stipulations on this project going forward. We do not have the smoke stacks at this time. We cannot assess whether or not they're going to be effective or not. So I'm proposing this. For the planning board. As you saw, they have two. Foundations for two cooling towers. They want seven. They need to come back before this planning board. If they want anything more than two approved. So I'm asking you tonight to approve two and two only. I'm asking that you also with regards to the water towers, they want two. I'm asking you to approve one and one only. This is to make sure that they are held accountable for their promises that they are making tonight. This is not being unreasonable. This allows them to continue the current construction and give them what they need to complete what they have currently. This also gives them time to keep their promises. Something that has been questionable in the past and only until recently has come to fruition. I don't think that this is unreasonable a request. I really don't. And I really, really, really didn't want to have to do this to prolong this either. Because you know what? Four years is long enough to be dealing with the smoke stack emissions problems. And it's, it's time to just do what you say you're going to do. For Christ sakes, I'm sick of doing this, but I will be here every time until you do what you say you are going to do and fix the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak?
I'm gonna say something.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, at this point, what I'll do is I will let either, uh, Luke or Tao respond to, um, the questions that were brought up before. Uh, my, a lot of the, the neighbors and I know, uh, Tao said he wants to address some of the issues, so I'll let, um. The Markley Group respond to the questions and comments made by the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to address some of these. Um, some of them and I, I can have Tao talk about, um, you know, things like the drainage and the site plan approval. Just, just going back, I, I, I try to keep notes on, on the comments, um. You know, we, we are not planting any trees or any plantings. On the, uh, butter side of the fence, um, specifically, you know, Eileen Castle, we did plant some. At a neighbor's house, um, that picture that Tao showed overlooking our generators, but that was at request of the neighbor. Um, so we're not, you know, towards Eileen Castle's house or any other areas, you know, landscaping will be on our side of the fence. You know, they brought up the, the cooling lower, there, there was a, uh, verbiage in there for the cooling tower waste drains. Um, that, that's simply the drains for the, these cooling towers when they're blown down or when they need to be drained. It's just the, the water coming out of these cooling towers. Uh, we do have a water, outside water treatment vendor and a third-party water treatment consultant that also independently tests the water in these towers. Um, so these, these towers don't pose any risk to adjacent neighbors. These are. Um, the most widely used large-scale cooling equipment out there. So, um, you know, hospitals, nursing homes. Schools, um, high-rise buildings, I mean, the, these same style towers are everywhere. Um, the vapor released is from evaporation of the towers. So solids that are, um, suspended within the cooling tower water. Um, are, are precipitated out during the evaporative process. So the only thing that comes out of these towers. Is, uh, just pure evaporated water. Um, we do clean our towers at twice the recommended frequency. We clean them twice a year as opposed to once a year. Um. And like I said, we, we do have an independent third party that does test our cooling tower water. Uh, this is part of our, our critical process that we have to maintain our customers. Um, so certainly the, the water in these towers is, is constantly monitored. Uh, checked and I, I, I will put us up, up against. Any other facility out there that we have a more, um, regimented water treatment program than, um. You know, a, any of the variety of other industries that use these water towers. Um, the, uh, dirt pile that was, was referenced that, that has been tested, that is, th- there's no. Toxic chemicals or anything buried within that dirt. Um, as part of the, the site plan, we have a lot of work to do in the main parking lot of the building where the grade gets raised up. Um, so the reason that dirt hasn't been brought off-site is because we are planning on using it as part of our construction process. So it, it's not, not contaminated. There's no issues with it. Uh, we have hydro seeded it. Uh, we do have our site contractor has dedicated a water truck to the site to try and cut down on. Uh, you know, some of the dust issues and concerns that, that we've gotten over, um. You know, that we've heard here at the planning board meeting and at the city council meeting. The, in terms of the, the timeline for the stack height, we're working with our, uh, Caterpillar right now. Um, you know, we've got some engineering to do on the Caterpillar side and then. We have a little bit of, of structural work to do for the, uh, the generator enclosure so they can support this additional stack height. They need to be tied back, um, properly. So obviously they're not. Disturbed within wind and they don't get knocked over. So we, we don't have an exact timeline on that, you know, we're, we're probably in the twelve to sixteen weeks. Um, these have to be engineered, they have to be custom fabricated, there has to be, um, you know, shutdown scheduled for the. Um, existing generators. So i- it's not an overnight thing, but it is a process. That we have started and that, you know, we are committed to, um, to do and to help to, you know, try and, uh, mitigate this issue that we're having. Uh, and just with, with the work that's ongoing, um, all, all the ongoing work is part of a, um, you know, existing approved. Uh, building permit. Uh, I think as you can see from the letter from the building commissioner. Uh, we are working very closely with the city with the work that is going on, both, um, the scope that we're. Uh, working on right now and working hours and other issues. So, um, you know, there, there's a lot of structural site work, underground utilities that, um, you know, are part of the building permit that were part of the previously approved site plan. That would happen regardless of whether the site plan before you tonight is approved or not. Uh, and with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Tao to talk about, um, I think the, um, you know, the erosion drainage issue that was brought up on Born Street as well as the, um. The, um, Hales Brook repair and our, our site plan approvals.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, thank, thanks, Luke, and, uh, thanks, thanks, Jake. I, uh, I, I really appreciate your tenacity. I, uh, I think that's, that's pretty impressive. Um, but, but a few things I, I do want to give you some more information on and I also would, uh, like to, uh. Uh, refug, about a few things here. Um. And again, just like. Look, I tried to take some notes here, so I hope I can, uh, can address everything, but I might, I, I might skip, skip some stuff. Uh, Hales Brook, uh, to start off with, um. We had an emergency repair on the wall done because the wall along Hales Brook caved in and this was, I want to say it was twenty sixteen. Um, part of the wall we found, uh, this spring as well had, in a different part of the wall had caved in. And, uh, we, uh, actually filed for an amended order of conditions this summer and we got, we got an amended order of conditions. Uh, this summer for, uh, again, repair on the wall and I, I, I could potentially. Pull up the photographs here, but at that point in time, we also re-pointed the, the entire wall because it was just, you know, it was being undermined by the brook. So we have an order of conditions for that and I, I believe that that's just outside of the jurisdiction of the planning board and in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. So. Um, that's, that's all correctly, uh, dealt with. Um, you, the photo, the boom and the photograph, you had one shot of the boom from Prince. Uh, Prince Avenue, where you could see how the, the boom slopes down towards the generators as, as you. As, as I did, as I told during my presentation, I, that's where we, we showed that the trees on the, the approved plans, but you know, I, I decided. Out on site to, to make a modification on my own, um, and pull. All the trees up and, 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 you know, more facing you. Uh, and the older street, uh, residents, just so that they had, would have more effect. And I could tell you as a matter of fact that all the material that's shown on the plan is there. It looks sparse because the, the, uh, maples, uh, don't have any leaves on them at the moment. The three maples have were planted. Um, and the, actually there is quite a few tall grasses that are planted, but you know, they're coming in, they come in pots and they're just really stubbies at the moment. Because that's the way they come out of the nursery and they're there and you. I'm sure that's from where you are at the moment, you, you just can't see them, but ev- everything that's on, uh, shown on the plan is there. Um. As far as the, uh. Uh, the, the water on, uh, or any, uh, any overflow of water on older street goes, uh. We, we are, we are under the downslope, as you, as you've seen in lots of the photographs, we were on the downslope from, from Born Street. Uh, so we get, uh, quite a bit of water and we've had, uh, actually quite a bit of water that, that was, that came. Uh, it has come down and we've had, we've had some problems with it and, and the boom, uh. Kind of helps, helps protect us from the water. There is right in front of the, uh, the driveway of Eileen's property is a, uh, is a catch basin. That's installed actually a little bit proud. It's, it's an inch or two above the pavement, so it, it doesn't take up much, but. That's, that's, I think, one of her, uh, main issues, but obviously, uh, we, we are not causing any water problems in her backyard. Because our property is fifteen feet lower than her property. So, um, any water, uh, problems that she has, uh, aren't ours. Um. And as far as the site plan approval goes, uh. On the first site plan approval that we got, uh, was in. In twenty fifteen and it did not show generators, uh, per se. It did have a large equipment yard shown where we still have the equipment yard and any equipment yard at this point in time. Are besides the, the generators, uh, we have some cooling equipment sitting in there and, and some other, uh, equipment. So. It's, we've always shown in, uh. An equipment yard there and this, this was the equipment yard that, that came about. Granted, we didn't call out generators, but you know, at that point in time, that was a bit unclear what, what was going where. Um, and, and, uh, these generators were, was decided to go there, uh, were decided to go there. And we filed when that decision was made, we filed for a building permit and. We got a building permit on them, not that I want to. Throw the, the building inspector under the bus, but you know, we, we did. Do. Uh, the proper. Uh, the proper things by, by filing for a building permit and he as the, the zoning enforcement officer could have kicked us back at that point in time, which, which he didn't. Um, in twenty eighteen. Uh, we did show, uh, on, on the site plan approval that we got at that point in time that, that was including, uh. Uh, building, uh, building four, um. Necessitated that, that site plan modification. We did show, uh, the four. Uh, the four generators two were placed at that point in time, two were not, but they were shown on our twenty eighteen. Uh, site plan approval. So therefore I, I, I think Jake that I, I don't think I, I was, uh. I, I, I didn't want to play, uh, pull a fast one because we, we have been showing them and we, we've gotten building, uh, building permits on our generators. So. Um, I, I, I think that's, that still is, uh. We, we, we're still in, uh, did the right thing there. And. If there's anything else that, uh. That I forgot.
No, just, Mr. Chairman, this is Luke Kipper with Markley. If I can just add, uh, one of the other comments brought up was, uh, that. Um, you know, we didn't look at other locations for this, for the water tanks. Um, where we did discuss that in Stan Text's letter to the board. On, uh, September twenty fifth, we talked about that last meeting about. Um, why the water tanks are, are in that store, you know, in, in that specific location due to. Um, infrastructure and some other reasons, but that, that was addressed in previous meetings.
Thank you. Yeah, I believe you talked about how the, because of water line, the way the wa- water line came in. And then you got approval from the water department for the water pressure and it said it should be no concerns. But the way you wanted it to come in, the watering, the water line made more sense. To put it in that location, therefore it didn't fit the other locations. I believe that was part of the conversation Luke that we had.
Yes, sir, correct.
Yeah, I remember that conversation. Okay. Thank you. Um, anything else further from, um. Markley Group?
Nothing from Markley Group.
Okay, thank you. At this point in time, I'll turn it over to any, the board members for any questions or comment.
So, Mr. Chairman, before they, could I just?
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Alites. I know you've been talked about a few times, so I was waiting for you to trip in.
Yeah, well, you know, I just want to say I chose not to speak tonight. So as not to allow Mr. Fort's. Baseless personal attacks on me distract these proceedings. It's as simple as that. I think my fifty-year reputation before the planning board in the city of Lowell speaks for itself. And, um, just disappointed that I have to be, uh, thrust into this thing to distract the board. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, at this point in time, I'll turn it over to the board members.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
So, um. Obviously, we've, we've made a lot of, uh, I think, uh. A lot of progress from where we started in May. Um. Somewhat disappointed it's taken this long to be able to make, uh, the progress that we have, but obviously we've, we've. Uh, we have made some progress, you know, the challenge we'll, we're dealing with here and, um. Is, as long as I've been doing this, i- is when you have conflicting zones, we have a light industry. we have a light industry zone and we have residential zone. We don't have a transitional zone in between the two. So you've got the residential abutters right on the light industry border. So obviously, this challenge is there for conflicting interest with any kind of business that we go into the light industry zone and the residential neighbors. We've had this with regional retail and residential. And we've had this with light industry and residential. And obviously, that's always a challenge. This, Markley Group is before us for site plan review. There is some limitations as to what we can and cannot do with a site plan review. We can put reasonable conditions if there are some technical violations in the in the application, which we actually pointed out as far as the public notice. Then there are certain grounds to either not go forward or deny. But the as far as a an application that comes before us that meets the requirements for site plan review, it is the purview of the board to render a decision with reasonable conditions. So having said that, you know, we've certainly, I think, one of the biggest concerns has been the the buffer around the residential neighborhood. Because that's the biggest challenge with the conflicting interest in the use of the of the of the two different zones. So obviously, the disappointment, and I expressed that with the the original landscape plan, is that here we were in 2020 and there hadn't been much more progress on this side of the the site with this area of the neighborhood. So I understand the frustration in the skepticism of the neighbors. And so it was nice to see progress. But quite frankly, we had to pretty much hit you over the head to get the progress that we got where we are right now on the landscaping. So certainly, you know, definitely want to see that addressed. And my question is, even as work would continue within the site, Theo or Luke, I don't know what's reasonable, but I really, if I'm looking at if we condition that the landscaping around the perimeter of that site had to be completed, you know, by the, you know, however you define the spring of 2021, seems to me that would be reasonable. I mean, I understand we're losing, we're losing time now. But, I mean, if we made that May of, you know, 2021, does that seem reasonable from your perspective? I mean, regardless of what you're doing internally, I understand operationally, it doesn't add a lot of value to you. But it really, you know, had this been done some time ago, it would have helped the situation, I think.
Sure, this is Luke with Markley. You know, I think one of the tale hinted towards it with the Born Street. But, you know, a lot of the perimeter landscaping ties very closely together with the perimeter fencing and grading as well. So, you know, certainly with some of the abutters, you know, there's some grading changes that have to happen to put the fence in correctly. So that honestly, that is one of the reasons why some of this perimeter planting has lagged. Because, you know, we are working on this fence upgrade. But frankly, it's a very capital intensive fencing that we're putting in. So it's not necessarily as easy as just if we put trees in now, but we're not ready to do a fence for a little while afterwards. We basically trash all that landscaping when we go back in for the fences also.
So if we're talking like May, if we're talking, Luke, if we're talking, say, the end of May 2021, do you not see the fencing in at that time?
I think, you know, certainly, south side fencing we can have. There's a lot of, there's still a lot of fencing. I don't know if we have a site plan up, Theo. But there's a lot of fencing still on the north side of the building that might, you know, abut industrial sites or not necessarily the residential areas.
Right.
That we frankly, we still have a lot of, there's still a lot of related site work that has to happen in those areas.
You know, obviously, Luke, my concern is is the buffer between the residential zone and the light industry zone. So.
Sure, sure. So we could, you know, certainly where the the property line abuts residential houses or neighbors, we could we could commit to that timeline.
Yeah, okay.
But as you see, there's still a lot of on the north side. There's still a lot of, frankly, a lot of square footage and a lot of money in fencing up there. So I wouldn't necessarily say that would be included, but, you know, where directly it butts the neighbors.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we're already doing this Born Street. We've already done some of the south side of the building, you know, close up to where Jake's residence is. So the rest of that wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, good. And then any any idea, I would have liked to have seen some sort of picture or rendering of what the sound deadening fencing barrier would look like? Any any idea here? And am I missing something in material?
No, this is something that, you know, it came up, you know, with us meeting the restrictions at the we're trying to kind of add this in as, I guess, some belts and suspenders or for, you know, it came up since our conversations with the last meeting. So it would be some sort of solid fencing material. It'd likely be a paneling system that attaches to our current fence. But, you know, this is something that we frankly, it's come up kind of quickly just because we're trying to get ahead of some of these neighbor issues and trying to trying to mitigate those concerns. So that that hasn't been fully vetted yet and it hasn't been, we don't have the material picked out. We don't have a vendor. But it's something, you know, and talks with VHB that, you know, it makes sense to do. And I think it it'll help our relations with the neighbors. You know, certainly since these these sound issues have come up.
Yeah, I mean, I like that idea. I think I would, I would, I guess I would make it subject to DPD approval as far as, you know, final aesthetics of how that would look. But all right, and then the I think one of the I have to say, one of the concerns, and I know Theo, I, and personally, I have some experience with some of those trees that you're planting. They have varieties, but and I, you're right. I think the growth is around three feet per year. I believe the type that you planted is the maximum height somewhere on 18 feet. Is that correct?
And it could be a bit taller even.
Oh, okay.
It's green giant, I think, went in.
Could, okay, good, it could be greater than that.
Yeah, one thing that I forgot I was just thinking about, and sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's correct.
It's like, it was said that, you know, it took four years for us to get here. It's, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, we weren't sitting at twiddling our thumbs for four years. We've been, it's been a whole process. And as I showed you with with these images before, we've been working our way around the property. And yes, nothing has happened in Jake's neighborhood in the last four years. But we've been making progress on the other sides of the site, as you can see here.
With all due respect, nobody, I think, disputes that. Unfortunately, the the items that would have helped to, you know, as Luke said, get ahead of what some of the concerns would be, that would have gone a long way to get ahead of what some of the concerns would be. So, I mean, that's the point. I mean, there's other projects throughout the city. I think I use the Lowes as a good example of the intense screening that the the boards had required to help screen the neighbors. And they're even across the street. So and 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 to your point, and I understand it's quite an investment. And again, we don't need to rehash that. We've been through the facility and it's understandable, the investment that's put into it. But it's flip flip this around to the abutters. They've been basically abutting a construction site for four years. So, you know, that's, you know, it's it's this, we just don't need to be sensitive all the way around what's going on here. We understand, again, conflicting uses. It's a great reuse of this building. I'll be honest with you, I was aware of when the bank foreclosed on this building. And I couldn't imagine in a million years what the reuse would be for this building. And, you know, I really couldn't, you know. There was actually some talk of the Lowell High School going on that site at one point as possible possibility. So, you know, that's not the point. The point is, is trying to recognize here, we've got, you know, in a residential neighborhood that really there's no buffer. It abuts this light industry zone. It's basically been a construction site for four years. There was a buffer in the landscaping that was approved. But to this state, they still haven't seen it. And there was some modifications to the site plan. And you did say, well, you got your building permit. And that's fine, but that doesn't negate the fact that, you know, when those neighbors came to the to the meetings, they didn't have to, in their mind, they didn't have to worry about anything being in that location. So all of this is legitimate and all of it is legitimate as to what you bring to the site. But that's what we're trying to address here in the site. So that's my concern about is trying to see if we can address. I appreciate, Luke, I think what you what you offer out there makes a lot of sense. And if we could progress that way, I think that would be the way to do it. If I heard it correctly, if I heard everybody this evening, you're committed to the exhaust fan being raised. So I believe we could make that a condition that it would, it would be raised. I do have, I understand the concern with the monitoring. But I do know even from from comments that we have in city departments that this at the end of the day, the permitting and the monitoring of all of the stacks really does fall under state and federal authority. So I think we just, from that perspective, have to be mindful. I would expect that the city, that you would comply with the city's noise levels ordinances in that, in that you'd have to comply with that. And so we would make that a condition. But I think the other thing is, I'll be honest with you, on the second, to the point that was made, at least with the second water tower, this is what I would like to propose, is that, and you've made it very clear that there's, you don't see a need in the near future for that second tower. What I'd like to do this evening is, is I would suggest as a condition that the second tower would not be erected until a sign off from DPD as to the adequacy of the landscaping in the the residential neighborhood as a result of that second tower. So what will happen is that it'll give us a chance to see, did the mature trees accomplish what we wanted them to do? Was the fencing adequate? And then obviously, it wouldn't be with that condition, and I don't want to give any false hope to anybody. It wouldn't be a tool to stop the second tower, but it would be a tool to say, look, it has to be something else done in addition to trying to provide some landscaping here that we didn't accomplish. I mean, does that sound reasonable? Luke?
Yes, sir, yeah, that's reasonable for the the second tower.
Okay.
Luke, sorry, sorry to interrupt. Does this, this means erection of the water tank? I just want to make sure, I want to make sure that we are approved to put the foundation in.
That is correct, and that's why I selected the word erection. Yes, yeah.
I appreciate that because that's that's going to be difficult with a full water tank right next to it.
Yeah, no, what I'm looking for is the ability to say, look, we need to go back and redo the landscaping or the buffer, or we've got to come up with something better than, you know. We didn't accomplish what we thought we were going to with the original landscaping plan.
Yep, that's understandable.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, those are my comments at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Any other board members, questions, comments?
I have one.
Yes, Mr. Lockhart.
Mr. Fisher, is there a timeline involved here in any of these?
Well, the landscaping in the fencing along the residential was the end of May is what I was looking for.
Yeah, all right, should that be included in the?
Yeah, that would be included in the condition.
All right, all right.
What I would be intending, yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Lockhart?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Richard. Any other board members, questions, comments, concern?
Mr. Chairman, I have one comment as member Galvin.
Go right ahead, Ms. Galvin.
So, yep, so I agree with Jerry's comments. And I also really appreciate the neighbors continually showing up at these meetings. I help, I think it helps us understand, especially because I wasn't a part of the original approvals in 2015, 2016, 2018. And I also agree with kind of putting the timeline, implementing the timeline for the site work and for the landscaping. But my question, and that forgive me if this was answered at one of the earlier meetings, but of the two water tanks, is there a decision made on which one is being erected first as part of the first phase?
Yes, it is the furthest water tank from the abutters. So it's the one farther away.
Okay, that's that's what I was wondering. And I think that that makes sense. So that was my only question. Thank you. Everything else has been answered. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. This one. Okay, thank you. Any other board members, any comments?
Oh, Eileen Castle again?
Nope, nope, sorry. The board members are speaking, ma'am.
Sorry.
We'll come back to you. I have to follow the procedure, I have to start the meeting all over again. You don't want to do that, do you?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so when it's your turn, then it goes to board turn. I have to follow the rules that put upon me as chairperson. So go ahead, any of the board members. Anybody else, any comments?
Chairman?
Yes, Caleb.
I agree with a member for Shat's suggestions and conditions. And I, I think that will address all the issues that I'm concerned with.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Malovich, any questions, comments?
My only comment is I think Jerry was concise. I think if we follow his lead, we're in fine shape.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Okay, I think we've heard from all the board members. Okay, Ms. Castle, what do you want to say before the board goes further?
Oh.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to.
I think you're muted, Ms. Castle.
Hello?
Hello?
I am so sorry.
No problem.
I did hear him say that the trees were not going to be, the fence wasn't going to be moved over onto my property. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. The fence line remains where it is now and the trees will be planted on Markley's side of the fence.
Okay, so maybe you'd want to meet with me so that you could explain how that's going to happen. I'd appreciate it. And the other thing I wanted to know about is what does site circulation improvements and association modifications mean?
Theo, you want to respond to that one?
Sure, we may. I might want to, I might want to share my screen again. Hang on here.
Take your time.
Yeah, so here's here's the site plan. It's up in this corner and hopefully you all can see that. That's, that's, that's the biggest one. We modified the circulation on the site. We, this was a dead end first in our original approved plan. And we had this shown as an exit, accident entrance here. And by removing the fuel storage tanks here in this location, we were able to connect these two, therefore improving our site circulation. So where we can, where it's better for us to drive older, for us and the fire department. So we can, the fire department can drive around the building. Actually, in terms of the neighbors, we are showing there's a little line here up top. And there is a little line here down at the bottom. We actually are proposing gates here so that you can't just drive around, drive around the building. These will be opticon operated gates. So the fire department can go go around the building, but only in terms of for maintenance, et cetera. Markley personnel can go around the building. Nobody, nobody else can go on a normal, a normal day. But that's improvements to the site circulation that we referred to.
But basically, they'd have to get through the market security before they'd even get in there, correct?
Correct, correct, correct. And then still, anybody, you know, any delivery truck that would be here wouldn't be, or that would be at this loading dock, wouldn't say like, oh, I'll go around this way. No, they will have to go out that way.
So you restrict the people who are on site for different other means, so they can't just have free will and drive around the whole site?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Does that also mean that they can't use the Andrew Street entrance and exit?
Well, we 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 are still using the Andrew Street entrance and exit, but as as what as I described in the letter of a month or so ago, um, there is no security personnel here. There is no uh, ways for us to check people in and out here. So this will be uh, only used on an occasional basis for maintenance, et cetera, if we have to use it. But otherwise, this this will be a closed gate.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Lanninghan?
Yes.
Really quick, can I ask you, um, can I ask Mr. Fisher a real quick question on that? So he did put the stipulation in there. So thank you, Mr. Fisher, for hearing. You know, I've been along here for so long. Um, I I really appreciate you putting that stipulation in there, but I know you said about the uh, fencing and the landscaping for May of 2021, but you didn't put any timeline on the smokestack elevation. Is there a plan to put a timeframe on that? I know um, Luke said 12 to 16 weeks, I think is what I heard in his statement. Um, so I'm just kind of wondering if you can maybe include that May 2021 date that for when those improvements need to be completed by?
I think that's reasonable, Luke. I guess that that would make sense. I had written a uh, your your uh, your timeline as well as 16 weeks, but I think that would tie it all in at the same time. Does that make sense for you?
Yeah, yeah. As as I said, you know, we're still, we're we're still working through the details on exactly how we're going to do it, but um, yeah, the May, the May 2021 uh, is a reasonable date for that.
Okay, good. Good. No, excellent. I appreciate the input from everybody. It's uh,
Thank you.
You know, there's a lot, a lot of issues and a lot of moving parts to this, so uh, appreciate everybody's input.
So at this point in time, I think we've heard from the applicant in detail. We've heard from the neighbors. We've heard from all the board members. Um, but at this point in time, we're ready for a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, uh, make a motion to uh, approve the site plan with the following conditions. The applicant will comply with noise levels as required by the zoning ordinance and agrees to mitigate any noise to be found in excess of the city's requirements. Uh, as always, I like that the plans are subject to final approval by the city engineer. Uh, prior to the second uh, tank, water tank being erected, uh, DPD must review and approve the landscape screening to determine the adequacy uh, of the the buffer uh, between the water tank and the residential homes. Um, and the applicant will raise the exhaust stacks um, prior to or by, I should say, uh, the month end, May 2021. The sound the landscaping and fencing uh, along the south side. Um, we are, uh, the site abuts all residential properties uh, to be completed uh, by month end, May 2021. Uh, the sound barrier fencing to be reviewed and approved by BPD. And I believe, Mr. Chairman, uh, that is um, the conditions.
Okay, do we have any discussion on a second? What's requested of board?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so motion is made and second by Mr. Lockhart. Um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Chair vote yes. Any opposition? Hearing none, the site plan um, amendment has been approved. We wish everybody good luck and hopefully um, Markley Group will be held to the fire and get these things done quickly. And hopefully we'll get that landscaping plan in. I understand the frustration of the neighbors as Mr. Vichette pointed out, it's difficult living next to a construction zone uh, for four years. Uh, but thank you all very much. We appreciate your input. Good luck and I hope it turns out well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along on the agenda. The next matter on the agenda is zoning amendment Rivers Edge Road. In accordance with Mass General laws, chapter 48, section five, Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an ordinance to amend the code of ordinance City of Lowell, Massachusetts with respect to chapter 290, therefore entitled Lowell Zoning Code, by extending the existing suburban neighborhood multi-family zoning district boundary to an area presently zoned traditional neighborhood two-family to an area comprising of 12.5 acre parcel in the vicinity of Rivers Edge Road. May we hear from the applicant, please, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Attorney Kevin Murphy, representing the Lowell Housing Authority. Uh, this is the last leg in what uh, we all know as the reinvention of Julian Steele.
Oh, okay.
And uh, this is on Upper Gorham Street. And what we're proposing to do is to finalize uh, this development uh, 12 plus acres uh, that are depicted on the plan. Right now, we are permitted to put in 26 units uh, in that parcel. Uh, these units would be comprised of uh, single-family units and duplex units, just like the rest of the uh, the development. Unfortunately, uh, because of the economics of the situation, uh, we cannot complete the project financially with only 26 units. So what we're looking to do is to be able to uh, change the density requirements so that we can uh, build more units uh, on that parcel than is presently uh, permitted uh, and therefore make it financially feasible. We haven't uh, completed our review as to what number of units that will be. Uh, I would just represent to you uh, that we are having an internal debate relative to that because we don't want to make it too dense. Uh, because if you go up there right now, there are obviously parking issues and whatnot. So we want to make sure that it's a um, it's a viable development. And so we're probably talking about maybe uh, 35 to maybe 40 units uh, that we would propose uh, to construct on this uh, on this development. Be that as it may, uh, because this is the reinvention of Julian Steele, uh, this is the first step. This is just changing the zoning so that we could come in with an amended plan. But any amended plan would first of all have to be approved by the planning board under site plan review. Not only planning board approve it, but the city council under the enabling statute would have to approve any amendment to the plan that it exists right now. Uh, the Lowell Housing Authority Board of Commissioners would have to approve any um, amendment to the existing plan. And the Department of Housing and Community Development would have to approve any amended plan uh, that we bring bring in. So there are many steps that have to be uh, encountered uh, before we uh, come to any uh, final decision. But the basic or first step is to ask that the city council allow us to rezone this property so that we can at least bring in a plan that we think is financially feasible uh, to uh, finish out this reinvention of Julian Steele. I've read the comments from uh, Francesca Sigliano. Uh, they're very well thought. We met with them and Jared Alves. We met with her and Jared Alves up at the site last week to go ever, over everything. And the one comment that I would just uh, like to address is that uh, the board should consider that extending the SMF zoning district to include this parcel would allow for more than seven dwelling units on a single parcel. Uh, I can unabashedly tell each and every one of the members of the board that we would never, ever, ever put seven dwelling units on a single parcel. Those of us who remember Julian Steele is that it was row houses. Uh, and that's why we reinvented Julian Steele because row houses didn't work and multiple units on one parcel don't work. So we would never, ever put seven dwelling units on a single parcel. What we would represent to your board is that any plan which we have to bring before you in the future would be just similar to the existing uh, uh, residential units that are up there right now. Uh, single-family units and duplexes. So I have with me uh, this evening, uh, if you have any questions, we have our engineer Kevin O'Brien, who's who has been the person that has been constructing the units up to this point and will be continuing on uh, with whatever plan we ultimately uh, agree to. And uh, Adam Garvey, who is the Assistant Executive Director of the Lowell Housing Authority to um, answer any questions. But what we are petitioning uh, this evening is that the planning board uh, refer back to the uh, city council on November 10th, uh, a recommendation that we be allowed to uh, extend this um, zone uh, to the SMF so that we can uh, build more units than we have in there right now. Uh, thank you very much. And if there are any other questions, uh, we're um, we're prepared to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, is anybody else going to speak on behalf of this? Um, Councilor Murphy or just the answer questions if necessary?
No, just if they're, okay, if there are any questions available.
Thank you. All right. Um, so at this point in time, I'll turn it over to anybody like to speak in the public. Anybody uh, from the public like to speak on this rezoning request? Anybody like to speak on the rezoning request? On the rezoning request? Hearing none. Um, any of the board members have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have one quick question.
Sure.
Uh, in the area that's being proposed for rezoning, are there any existing homes from the phase one of Julie uh, the reinvention on that site that would be affected by the zoning?
No.
Okay.
Kevin O'Brien, am I correct?
No, no, there are no houses existing there. That was a virgin piece of land when we started on that piece.
Okay.
Yeah, when I was down there, Bob, the other day, it it all comes down and it stops on the end of uh, what's it, Addie Way, Rivers Edge Road, and you can see it's all wide open grass all the way down to the river. Yeah. Any other board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just um, I'm quite familiar with the site and I understand the uh, the economics of it because there's a lot of infrastructure that has to go on to make that the site buildable. Um, but I I guess I I'm trying to understand as I look at the ta- dimensional uh, table uh, within the city zoning ordinance. Uh, Attorney Murphy, you mentioned that, you know, the intent is to try to develop it in the same type of housing Rivers Edge was with single families and two families, which is the current zoning. Um, and it allows lots as small as 6,000 square feet. But by changing this to the SMF, the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet and the lot area per dwelling unit is 10,000 square feet. So, and then it requires a special permit if you're going to go beyond the three family and 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 come before the planning board. But I'm, I honestly, I don't understand the math as to how how is the SMF going to? And and again, when we make a zoning change or recommend a zoning change, it's not specific to a project. We have to look at the underlying zoning and what that's going to allow. But if I look at what the intent is of of extending this zone, I I'm having a hard time understanding how that's being accomplished. So I'm just a little curious as to how you arrived to the SMF zone, knowing that it's in a budding zone and it's not spot zoning and you can continue it. But I I'm not quite sure what you're gaining from changing it from a TTF to the SMF to accomplish what you're trying to do. Kevin O'Brien, can you answer that question?
I I don't think I uh, maybe I don't understand the question, but the property next door, the the uh, the apartment buildings that are next door are in an SMF zone. And I think the density over there was was higher. That's, I think, why we chose to do the SMF here.
So in order to achieve that increased density, though, you'd have to be building uh, units that are more than uh, two-family units. Is that correct? Because you you actually need a big a lot. You're going to need a big a lot to build a two-family home in an SMF zone. But I'm just trying to understand if in fact you're trying to keep the character of uh, what Julian Steele, how that was developed in the abutting homes on the on the streets leading into that. I I'm I'm just having a hard time trying to see how that's being achieved without taking advantage of the increased units. But however, if you use the proper lot area per dwelling unit, you're still not going to, unless you, unless there's a zoning change and then you're looking for waivers. Uh, I'm I'm just having a hard time to to see how you, that's being accomplished. Kevin?
Yep, Kevin.
Do you know, do you understand the question and can you address that?
I I don't think I can, Joe. I don't uh, I think we've, I think what we were looking at is possibly doing a uh, condominium type proposal here. So we didn't have 20,000 square foot lots building. I mean, we'd be completely going against what we've got out there, what's approved out there right now, which are four and 6,000 square foot lots. But so I think we'd be uh, kind of shooting ourselves in the foot um, under that scenario.
All right. So I think that's a question that Whitman would have to answer for the planning board.
Well, thanks all.
Yes. But uh, Mr. Fisher, any proposal that we would bring before you would have a uh, complete design by the engineering firm uh, showing the lots and uh, how we would uh, achieve the uh, the increased uh, units uh, within that zoning district.
May I ask, ask a quick question?
Caleb, go right ahead.
So uh, so are we uh, are we expecting uh, the lot lines to be redrawn or some uh, subdivision to be um, redone for for um, whatever uh, the the housing authority is proposing?
Yes, so, yes, we are.
Okay. And maybe even including the 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 right of way for the public streets that that is currently on the plan right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be a complete uh, re-subdivision there.
I see.
Any other board members have any questions?
I have none.
Yeah, the only questions I have, I understand where Jerry's coming from on this because on, if you keep it in the TTF, all she needs is a 6,000 square foot lot. Hmm. Okay, so that's what was currently out there now. All the other houses now, and that's what you indicated what you wanted to do. So if you go to the SMF, you're looking at a 20,000 square foot lot. So, I mean, I know what you're requested to do, but as Mr. Vichette indicated is, once we change the zoning, um, then the maximum stuff can go in regardless. I I know what you're requesting 35 to 20 unit, but basically if we allow the SMF, you're talking, um, we can do seven unit or more on one lot. And if you break that down into 12.5 acres, you're probably talking like 190 units.
Yeah, but we're never going to do that, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, once you get the zoning approved, it's out of our hands. So then it's approved that put in that many units.
Yeah, but we still have to come back before you with a.
I know, but I'm just saying that when you come into the site plan, I mean, come in for. A zoning requirement, we have to look at like we had the same situation. In the past, out at the Boulevard, when they want to change the garage out there and all the councils love the garage and want to keep it the same. We said, well. They sell the garage. Next day they put five or six different things in it allowed in the zoning. And the council says, oh, we didn't know they could do that. We said, yeah. So basically, we have to decide whether. I mean, because like what we've seen in the past, no disrespect, counselor. Is people come in, they've asked for zoning thing, we gave it to them. They turned around and sold it and somebody else came in and maxed it out and then put down what we thought would happen. So we've seen it over the years and I'm not saying you're going to do this. Don't get me wrong. But I'm just saying that that's what can happen when we change the zoning. So I mean, and I understand the intent. And I have a lot of respect for the Housing Authority. I know a lot of people who work there. They do good work. I get all that. So I'm just as a caveat, you know, it's at first by looking at them like. Wow, if I'm going to one to another, you're almost doubling the amount of units that you could put down there is what it looks like. You know, and I think that's what Jevy was trying to look at as well, saying, you know, one, if you look at the 6,000, you want to stay with the 6,000. Then the TTF, you can do that right now without asking for the zoning change.
Yeah, I was going to say, Mr. Chairman, the only way to accomplish with what you want to accomplish is not to build single and two family homes. It's that's the end. So, you know, you could keep the zoning where it is to do that. But this allows you again to do townhouses, to do detached on. On the lots. And if you're doing one to three family homes. Given the lot area per dwelling unit, you can only put two units on a 20,000 square foot lot. You know, I just. Honestly, we're giving a recommendation based on what's being asked. I'm almost tempted to give a no finding on this. To the enemy. So if the council is within their purview and they make a binding vote, but I don't think. What's being purported as what what you want to accomplish is what. Is being asked for is going to get you to that end. It doesn't seem to fit. So that's my that's my concern.
Any other board members have comments about anything that's been discussed?
I have one question. I agree that it's without a proposal in front of us, it's hard to see how this will work as. As. The applicant is describing it. I do have a question, and this might be a question for Fran. That is, is there a way that there could be an overlay district instead of a complete change of rezoning? So that it would require a special permit in order to have more than a single family or a two family home. So I guess I'm just wondering that way there would be more oversight from the planning board about what will be the permitted use for this area. As opposed to just saying you can have seven units, seven units on one lot. It would actually be a special permit would be required to have more than a two family on a lot.
That's a good question. I don't think that we in Lowell use overlays in that way. I don't. I'm not familiar with any overlays that. Have. That serve that purpose. So I would have to look into it, but I could definitely look into it.
I will offer, though, Sinead and Fran, if you go to the table of uses. In the SMF zone, so they would be able to build. And again. We don't want to apply it to a particular project because that's not how we vote on zoning changes. And many times applicants confuse it with that, but. The by changing it to an SMF zone, you can by right. Do four to six dwelling units on one lot. And you can have semi detached detached dwellings. And you can do mixed use. You can do townhouse development. If they go to seven or more units, then it does require a special permit. Before the planning board, if I go to 11.3 of the zoning ordinance. It's just, like I said, I if it's. It's it appears the intent is obviously to upzone it. And I get it. So the economics work. So you can have more units. To really, you know, pay for the site costs. And I understand that, but I guess. It's what's being asked and what's being represented as what intended. It's it's not, doesn't seem to match. As presented, I guess.
Yeah, I think, Jevy, by looking at the SMU, as you indicated on the table of uses.
Yes.
SMF, excuse me, yeah. I think for the seven or more units, I think that is. By right, yes, it's not a special permit.
Well, if you go down to the C section, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, 11.310.
See the key? Yeah.
Yeah, and 11.310, that just indicates, and I have a copy of 11.310.
11.310, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. 11.310, yeah.
Yeah, 11.310, just that was added and it talks about. That they have to. If they sell it to another entity, they have to make sure that they get taxes on it.
Oh, God, yeah, you're right. Yeah. So yeah, that is a by right. That is by right. Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good. Thank you, Mr.
Because I saw it's it's actually it's like a little arrow next to the Y. So I have to look that up to figure out what it is. Yeah. So it talks about. Right. So it's the.
So in both instances, it's by right.
Right, either one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's because of some purchases made by the university.
I think you're correct.
So.
So those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. I don't know how the rest of the board members feel. Yeah.
Sure. Okay. Anybody else have any discussion?
No, I just I concur with Mr. Frichette's analysis. Very good.
Well, I I'm looking at the applicant here and who's had a track record and has to go through million hoops. To get any development approved. By all the entities involved. And I'm leaning toward allowing it to happen. So that. You know, they can develop a plan that is consistent with the reinvention. And is feasible financially. Providing more low income, middle income housing. That's just my thought.
All right, thank you, Bob. Anybody else? Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm looking at the dimensional regulations as well. And I can see that if if the applicant is aiming to. Build one and two family dwellings, SMF actually wouldn't help them as the loss side, minimum loss size will be bigger. But they can build more massive houses, however. Because of the VAR is higher, but. So so I think it really depends on. How how the the applicant is going to develop the land. So if. I guess if they are requesting for SMF, I I'll give them the better of the doubt that they they know. What they they are proposing. So that's my thought.
Thank you. Sinead, any further thoughts?
I still I think I still agree with Jerry that I would be pretty reluctant to see how it could be done with single and duplexes. And you're right that. If we permit the zoning change, then it could be developed in a completely different way potentially. I understand that there is. A series of reviews that would have to happen in order for that, but we'd be. Allowing it by right, so.
Thank you.
I definitely have concerns.
Yeah. I understand too. I know one of the applicants wished they had somebody else there to answer some of my questions because. As indicated, they say, you know, if they want to keep it the same with the 6,000, then they could just keep it in. A regular zone without changing to the SMF. So like I say, by the SMF. You what we're actually doing is allowing. Well, I mean. Well over more than double what would be allowed there now.
Mr. Chairman, just my thoughts are from a planning perspective and the planning board as a recommendation.
Correct.
Clearly, as a community, there are some political considerations and and the council has the final vote and it is the Housing Authority and. And obviously, you know, a lot of work has gone into it. And honestly, I was involved on the Rivers Edge. The front end of some of that and I'm aware of of obviously the massive effort to get it to where it is and. Bought everybody for that. But and certainly the council would have the binding vote. But I just think if we're actually giving a planning recommendation, I just would prefer a no finding. It doesn't, you know, we're not, we're not voting it down or giving a negative recommendation. But I think from a planning perspective, I think a problem, my feeling is it feels appropriate to just move that along with a no finding from the.
Any more information?
I understand your concern because what happens is if if somebody else went in there and took over that project, I mean, bought that land, once we approved it. They can put, I mean, I think, I mean, if you're talking seven units. On one parcel of land, you're probably talking over 150, 190. Units, which could be way, way up there. So I get that fact. And I understand if it was the TTF, it would just be the 6,000 and it would be basically what's currently there now. As we approved all those projects in the past, it took us all different phases to get them through. And then we did approve up there, obviously, all the changes where. The car dealership was up there before the 1400 motors and we approved that area. So. Yeah, so it's not just what the what the building requirement is going to be. I mean, like for a site plan, it's basically a site. It's a zoning change. So as indicated, we don't know what's going to show up and we know what the intentions are. But we've seen in the past with intentions, this is what we're going to put in. We've approved this, the zoning change. People sell it, they put in something completely different, say, well, the planning board approved it and they said it was okay. So and I understand what the applicant is and I understand he's in good standing with us. And like I say, in with the Housing Authority. I get all that and I. You know, it's just. Duplicating a lot of extra developments that could actually go in there. I understand that they're talking 35 to 40, which would be great. I think that'd be. I think that'd really come out nice if that's what what everything finally got approved with. And obviously, we would have a say when that come back before us and. I'd welcome that. So but I understand where it's tough making a zoning change recommendation because it opens up. A lot more that can happen instead of exactly what the applicant's looking for. And we do when we do a zoning change. We do have to look at all the other requirements that may go into that zoning change and not what may be just considered for a buildable site in the future. So. So at this point in time. We have to the board to make a motion. And I know we're only recommending body as indicated, and it does go before the council. They do have the final say in the matter, and I believe that's a week from tomorrow night. So we do have a recommendation just to make before the council. So what's the request of the board on the recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation that the board would render. No finding on this on this particular application.
Okay, so do we have a second on that motion?
Oh, second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motions made by Mr. Bichette and second by Mr. Lockhart. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 And anybody in opposition? So the chair votes yes, so I believe. The recommendation will be no finding and that motion carries. Attorney Murphy, good luck. I hope it works out for you and hopefully we'll see you back in here with the site plan that can be agreeable to all parties. We wish you well.
And you have my representation that it will be single families and duplexes only.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I think if that came in and we saw those plans that you indicated that you'd be going forward tonight, I think that'd be. I think that'd be very welcoming to to this board.
Absolutely.
I know you understand our concerns on what could possibly go in as the maximum and then someone puts everything in there. So it's not just what your. Request would be what could be the maximum on the site. So.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. That makes it a little more difficult for us. So I thank you for that. I appreciate that. So.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Council. Good luck. And I'm sure you've already voted, but if not, don't forget to vote.
I voted early and often.
Yeah, that they say, good luck. It's going to be interesting. So thank you very much. Moving along on the agenda, does we have anything follow up from any of the board members?
Mr. Chairman.
Start what will meet on November 9th, a week from today.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just add that the the Rock Bridge Advisory Committee will be meeting in November. And I'm hoping to be able to report. Some sort of progress on that, but I honestly, as I indicated to you, I honestly believe that. We are going to see some some real movement on this. And with a reasonable timeline. So hopefully at our our next planning board meeting, I'll be able to provide an update to the board.
Okay, yes, I know when they first came in and I remember you giving us an update that you see from the NEMCAG and the things that we've seen in the past. They were still looking at certain different areas for the bridge, one being the work bridge and either one being to the right of that, one being to the left of that. So I think they have to finalize that first, right, Jevy?
That is correct. That's still that's still the issue at hand, Mr.
Yeah, I know they did look a little bit downstream, a little bit upstream. Most people think we probably just go where the work bridge is, but I know that's. Yeah, it's one of the three concerns they were looking at.
There's three locations that have been identified and one of them is the exact location where it sits currently and. They would actually build two lanes adjacent to the existing bridge, keeping the existing bridge open. And then when they completed the two lanes, they would open those up and then they would then tear down the old work bridge and build another two lanes. There. The other thing would be to build actually the four lanes next to this existing bridge. And then the other proposal, which I would really like to see happening, there's a lot of people that in Natasha, I hate to see the fact that she left, but. She was she did indicate at the last. Advisory Board meeting that the bridge would, similar to the Howe Bridge, be diagonally from it from on Middlesex Street, it has to come at that. Exact location, but then go diagonally across the lineup with Old Ferry Road. They have a four lane signalized intersection rather than coming down to a T intersection right now on Protecta Boulevard. And then, you know, the traffic scatters. From there. So I think from a traffic flow, the best result would be to go diagonally across the Old Ferry. However. My understanding is that does cost somewhat more. Than the other two options and but my feeling is, you know, this is a bridge that's going to be utilized for decades and decades and decades in the future. And. I would hate to see the neighborhood get short changed with, you know, trying to just come down on a T intersection. Which has been part of the problem in that neighborhood for so long. And if we're going to have the permanent bridge, do it right the first time around. So. But we'll see. I will have a I will voice my opinion at the advisory board meeting, but obviously there's other factors that have to be considered.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Appreciate that.
Jerry.
Members have any further comments?
I have a question. That design money has been approved, right?
That is correct. Yes. Yeah, a lot of progress has been made on this. Yeah.
Is there a design firm that's been picked up?
You know, I'll have more information for you. Yeah, with the next meeting. But no, that's a good point. So this funding is starting to really show up as far as moving this forward and that's critical. Funding is critical. Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Does Fran have any further updates for us or we all set?
I do not.
Okay, so I think that concludes our agenda this evening. So we just need a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion adjourn.
Oh, second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
We have a adjourn. Good night and thank you very much, everybody. Let me have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Have fun tomorrow, Sinead.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Thank you again.
We'll call you early for the voting tablet. Yeah, I think you'll have a good.
I'll have them.
Yeah, a lot of people voted earlier, but I think you'll still be a decent turnout. It's gonna be a little chilly, but.
I hope so. I think so, too.
Yeah, good luck with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. See everyone soon. Bye.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night.